...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I like hearing those little voices doing the pledge. Sorry, Callie. We're starting off with two presentations tonight. First, we'll hear from the Bell's Chess Club and then the Future Educators Program at the high school. I also wanted to mention before we begin that items 20, 21, and 20, sorry, 21, 22, and 23 on the finance agenda have been removed, so I just wanted to make everyone aware of that. There are no other changes to the agenda other than that. So with that, Mr. Guyberson? Where's Mr. Guyberson? Oh, there you are. If you would like to come up to the microphone. I can't seem to get the distance with this prop. Correct. Oh, I'm sorry. It's Dr. Guyberson now? Oh, John, congrats. Sorry about that.
Come on up. Come on up. Thank you to everyone for allowing Bell's the opportunity to honor our chess club, which is part of the Strategic Games Club at the elementary schools, led by Mr. James Cho. Chess club offers students a unique opportunity to develop strategic thinking and problem-solving skills in an engaging and competitive environment. Chess requires higher-order thinking skills such as analysis, evaluation, and logical reasoning, which seamlessly translate into the classroom curriculum. By participating in the club, students enhance their ability to plan ahead, recognize patterns, and make informed decisions, skills that are essential for success in math, reading, and beyond. Without further ado, I turn it over to the students and our chess master himself, Mr. James Cho.
Good evening, everyone. One of the kids or one of our students back out in the hallway when we were practicing asked me, "How long has Bell's Chess Club been around?" I said, "How long have I been teaching? Twenty-one years." My first year at Bell's School, right out of college, I had nothing, but I wasn't too afraid to ask parents for hand-me-downs. And one of the things I asked parents was if you had any games at home, you'd like to volunteer for or volunteer to give up to our classroom, I'd be more than welcome to accept it. One of my students, I'll mention his name, he's 30 years old now, named Joe, he brought in a chess set. I said, "Oh, you play chess?" He said, "Yes." I was teaching 4th grade at the time. He said, "But I have no one to play with." I said, "Well, I'll play with you." So one of the days when we couldn't go outside, on a rainy day, we started playing chess. Other students in my classroom, they wanted to know how to play chess. Then pretty soon, I taught my class how to play. Then the other kids in the other classes started asking about it. I went to our PTO my first year at Bell's School 21 years ago, and I said to our PTO and our principal at that time, I said, "We need a chess club." I sent out permission slips only for 4th and 5th graders. Within a week, I'd gotten back 70 responses. So that's how Bell's Chess Club started, and it was started by a single student. And so I often tell them, I said, "One student can make a difference." Since then, Bell's School has offered chess club to 2nd to 5th graders. This year, we have 146 students in Bell's Chess Club, and our numbers continue to stay at that level. I will tell you, the thing, though, I'm most proud of, and our students here, they're each going to come up and tell you one thing about chess club. One of the things I'm most proud of is the camaraderie and the teamwork. They play for themselves, but they play for each other. I'll give you an example. I had a student who's now at the high school, one of the best chess players I ever had. At one of our tournaments, he competed, he won first place, as he always did. One of our 3rd graders was crying, he had lost all his matches, he was with his mother. He walks over to this 3rd grader, hands him his first-place trophy, and said, "I want you to keep this." And then when I said to him, I said, "Oh, you really? That was awesome. You didn't have to do that." He said, "No, Mr. Cho, I have a lot of trophies. I just wanted him to have one." That's what I'm talking about with Bell's Chess Club. I think that embodies our program more than any other anecdotal story I could tell you The most important lesson, though, that these kids learn is life lessons, our life lessons, I should say. It's that we have a motto, "Mistakes are a wonderful opportunity to learn, not just on the chessboard, but in life." These students, I would hope, they walk out of chess club not just as better chess players, but as better people. I'm proud to call myself the advisor and coach. I'm not a master. I'm proud to call myself the Bell's Chess Club advisor. I have 11 students with me, they're each going to come up. They've all brought trophies. As you can see, we enjoy a fine tradition of winning, not just at the local level, but nationally. So without further ado, I'll hand it over to our first student, Joseph Stephanie.
Hi, my name is Joseph Stephanie, and I'm a 5th grader. I've been a member of Bell's Chess Club since I was in 2nd grade. Chess has taught me patience. It has helped me to wait and think.
Hi, my name is Landon Walsh, and I am in 4th grade. Bell's Chess Club competes in tournaments, not just in New Jersey, but all over the country. Two years ago, I competed with Bell's at Nationals in Baltimore. Over 500 schools were there. Bell's came in 10th place with the elementary schools.
My name is Chris Pigden, I'm in 4th grade. Speaking of competitions, Bell's Chess Club competes every month at Princeton. Last time, we came in first place, and I won first place individually.
My name is Ryan Del Piso, and I'm in 4th grade. Bell's also competes for a state championship every year at Brookdale Community College. Last year, Bell's placed 5th place in the state of New Jersey.
My name is Colton Chikano, and I'm in 5th grade. Another great thing about chess club is that we are there for each other as a team. Yes, we play for ourselves, but we all try to make each other better, too. Also, we try to boost team morale at tournaments and play with each other.
Hi, my name is Kathleen Tukas. I'm in 5th grade, and I've been in chess club for four years. I've learned so much from being in chess club. One of the most important lessons I've learned is being able to think ahead. I've learned to anticipate and think before doing.
Hi, my name is Giada, and I'm in 3rd grade. I love Bell's Chess Club. Whenever we can't go outside for recess, chess is a great activity to play inside. I'm sure our teachers appreciate how quiet we are, too.
Hello, my name is Mackenzie Trumbull, and I'm in 5th grade. I've been in chess club since 2nd grade, and I love it. It has helped me to learn that mistakes are a way to learn and grow. We all make mistakes, but if we learn from them, we will become better.
My name is Teddy Ortiz, and I'm in 5th grade. Chess is my favorite activity because it helps me with problem-solving, helps to see a problem and find a way to solve it.
My name is Kyla Skipper, and I'm in... My name is Kyla Skipper, and I'm in 5th grade. Chess has taught me that no matter how bad something may seem, there's always a way to make it better. There's always room for improvement. And both of my sisters love chess and would want to stay and be a part of Bell's Chess Club.
Hi, my name is Weston Mazziano, and I'm in 5th grade. I'm so glad I came to Bell's School because I get to be a part of the chess club. We are proud to call ourselves Students of the School and Bell's Bears.
How impressive are they, huh? Are they fantastic? And of course, through the guidance from James Cho, Bell's Elementary Chess Club creates a love... It creates a love of critical thinking and growth. The skills students develop on the chessboard extend far beyond the game, strengthening their academic abilities and preparing them for their future challenges. As they strategize, adapt, and problem-solve, they build a foundation for lifelong learning, one move at a time. Congratulations, Bell's.
Come on back up. Certificates, guys.
All right, I'm going to read what the certificate says, because they're all the same for these great students. It says, "Certificate of Achievement. The Washington Township Board of Education proudly recognizes that and your name has demonstrated exceptional skill, dedication, and sportsmanship in the Bell's Elementary Chess Club. Your passion for the game, strategic thinking, and commitment to personal growth have contributed to the success of the Bell's Chess Club, and we acknowledge your participation and accomplishment with great pride. Signed, Dr. Eric Hibbs and Julie Kazempel." So, Colton, where are you? Come on over. Joseph. Okay, and this one goes to Brody. He's not here today, but we should still applaud him. Ms. Mackenzie. And Weston. I'm for Mr. Cho.
If you'd like to take the kids in the hall for a photo for the website, they can just go, you guys can all go through that door. And I just noticed everyone has chess swag, their shirts and stuff, which is really cool.
Actually, thanks to Mr. Bevel.
Is that... Oh, oh, thank you. Okay, while they're getting together, we have another presentation with the high school, Mr. Anderson and our future educators.
We were very happy to be here with Washington Township High School tonight to talk about one of our very stellar programs. We have many amazing programs at Washington Township High School, of which we are very, very proud. And we are very thankful to our faculty, our staff, and our support staff for doing such a great job to put these programs together and to support them. So tonight, we are talking about something called Future Educators, all right? Are there educators in the room? Many, many educators in the room. And we are certainly excited to start that excitement with our students at the high school, and we're doing so by having a program where students have the opportunity to have a class, and they get to go on a field experience. And the field experience is very rich. So I'm going to go back a little ways. I was principal of Whitman Elementary School for nine years, and I believe, Ms. Mason, you can correct me, I believe we were your pilot school or one of your pilot schools as we were getting it going, because I was always passionate about having students come in and work with our youngest learners. And so the program has flourished, and we have a presentation for you tonight. We have our advisor, Ms. Mason, and we also have a group of our students who are going to tell you a little bit about this program. We need teachers. We always need great teachers. We have many, and we will need more as people continue on their careers and we continue to educate, you know, the youth for the future. So I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Mason for a presentation, and of course, to our amazing high school students. Take it away.
Hi, my name is Brittany Mason, and I'm honored to be here today to share the impact and evolution of the Future Educator Program. What started as a program primarily focused on preparing students to become classroom teachers almost 10 years ago, has grown into a dynamic, student-centered initiative that guides students towards the many different pathways of education. Whether it's teaching, counseling, speech pathology, admin, educational policy, this program equips future educators with the skills, knowledge, and experiences needed to shape the next generation. Since I've designed this course to be fully student-centered, I've brought some of the future educators this year with me tonight so that they can show you firsthand what we do in class, and I'm excited for you to see their passion, creativity, and dedication to the field of education. And shout-out to our previous Future Ed students that I see as teachers in the district, which is awesome. All right, ready?
Program overview. The Future Educator Class is the final step in the early childhood academy pathway. This class allows students to explore what it's like to be an educator, examining educational philosophies, deepening the student's knowledge of planning lessons, observing classrooms, or practicing teaching skills. This curriculum aligns with Stockton University's Pathways to Education course. Students have the opportunity to receive four college credits from Stockton University.
Our learning goals. We explore diverse careers in education, various educational philosophies, and global education systems. We experience various teaching methodologies, classroom models, and best practices by participating in real-world classroom experience. And we reflect and examine experiences, goals to develop a teaching philosophy that prioritizes empathy, inclusivity, and lifelong learning.
Through problem-based learning activities, student-centered instruction, and expert testimonials, and providing educational background knowledge, students are given the opportunity to explore various fields within education. Learning opportunity examples include research colleges and university programs and requirements, tracing significant historical legislation, trends, and statistics in education, conducting research of various countries' educational systems, and creating and presenting lessons on various types of educational philosophies.
Along with exploring various pathways into education, students are proving many opportunities for real-world application. Learning opportunity examples include one-on-one interviews with educational professionals, education roundtable discussions, classroom observation, guest speakers, Q&amp;As with district admin team, and researching and immersing students in New Jersey's school report card data.
So just some about our district field experience. So Future Educator students must complete a 30-day field experience in a district school pre-K through 12th grade during the school day, replacing their regular course schedule. This allows for hands-on teaching practice, like cooperating with, working with a cooperating teacher, observing the classroom procedures, assisting with instruction, creating materials, and delivering at least one lesson, all while applying our coursework in real-world settings. By the end of our experience, we will have a portfolio built based off of a series of assignments that we complete throughout our experience. This serves as a valuable resource for college applications or even just as something to look back to in the future.
Throughout our Future Educators Program and our field experience, we have 33 students representing every district school. A teacher testimony says, "Thank you for allowing that student to be a part of my classroom. This is a great opportunity for students to get a glimpse of what it's actually like. I love this experience for our students. Thank you for letting me be a part of it." And a student testimony says, "I had no idea, I had no idea I would enjoy teaching as much as I do. There are rarely a chance that you get to apply everything that you learn in a classroom in real-life setting. It makes the learning so much more meaningful."
After our field experience, we will reflect on our growth by analyzing classroom observations, instructional strategies, and personal development. We also connect our hands-on experiences to course materials, deepening our understanding of educational theories and practices. Some learning opportunity examples are portfolio assignments, creating a professional resume, and reviewing educational law, policies, and current trends.
The Future Educator Program offers numerous real-world applications. Students develop valuable, transferable skills that benefit them, even if they choose a path outside of education. As a student who can't decide what they want to do after high school, after college, no matter what I choose, I will take the skills I learned from this experience and carry them with me. Here are just some examples of the skills I've learned during this time. Communication and collaboration. Public speaking, working with the community slash parents, and building a strong resume and portfolio. Professional and personal growth. Resilience, problem-solving, empathy, inclusivity, and professionalism in diverse educational settings. Time and task management. Organization and time management to balance responsibilities effectively.
Hi, my name is Anna Bucci. I'm at Bunker Hill Middle School with Ms. Westerby's 8th grade math class. And Ms. Westerby's class so far has been very insightful. She has taught me her tips and tricks on how she keeps her students engaged in what she's teaching. She has showed me how teachers never really get a break during the day, how they're constantly running around and preparing for the rest of the day or the day to come. By observing Ms. Westerby, I've seen firsthand how much teachers care for their students by her reminding her students about assignments, staying after to help students, and by creating a classroom with an inclusive environment.
My name is Kaylee Rigoria, and I'm at Bell's Elementary School with Mr. Cho. He just talked a few minutes ago, and some of the students who are actually up here know me as Ms. Kaylee. He teaches 5th grade, and not only has this experience been completely full circle for me, because I had Mr. Cho when I was just a 5th grader at Bell's, and I've done a lot of observing so far, and I have already gained such valuable insight in such a short period of time of the qualities that make an effective educator. This experience has given me a deeper understanding of what a classroom is supposed to look like, how a teacher is supposed to be, how things are supposed to run. I'm already so beyond inspired, and something that I've already held very close to me is just seeing the impact a teacher has firsthand on a student, whether that's a change in a mood or going from not understanding something to understanding something. It's just completely eye-opening and inspiring, and I want to thank Ms. Mason for giving me the opportunity to have, like, to be a part of this, because it's such a great program. And yeah, thank you.
Hi, I'm Annabelle Crigliano. I am at Orchard Valley Middle School with Ms. Campanini in her 7th and 8th grade classes, and I also had her for three years when I went to Orchard Valley. So I have loved every second of my field experience, from the first day I walked in and was introduced. I remember one of the students saying, "OMG, I like her," which may seem small, but honestly, it meant the world to me. I love being in a choir class because, one, I love music, and, two, I love seeing the students in their element. You can tell that the choir room is a safe space for them, where they are free to exist without pressures or limits. My favorite day that I observed was singing Valentine's Day. A select group of choir students sold valentines at $2 each, and would go into classes to sing a 30-second excerpt of a love song for whomever it was purchased for. This was a huge fundraiser and promo for the choir program, and the kids had a blast. I can't wait to see what this experience has in store for me, and I'm truly thankful to Ms. Mason for the opportunity.
Hi, my name is Arabella Sacco. I'm at Birch's Elementary School with Ms. Fuller and Ms. Mallard's 1st grade class. I had Ms. Fuller when I was in 2nd grade. My field experience has truly deepened my understanding of the teaching profession. I've gained a strong appreciation for teachers' workload and efficiency, and I'm grateful for the chance to assist. Working one-on-one with students, I've tailored my approach to their individual interests. Connecting on a writing assignment with a student for the passion for their flyer tickets, I was told to go and make sure he was on task, and he was really just having a hard time, like, getting to figure out what he wanted to write about, and I had asked him what makes him excited, and he told me that he was really excited when he got these flyers tickets. So it was really cool to be able to get that out of him and have him start working. It sparked their creativity and willingness to start working. Observing the entire class has highlighted the students' individual creativities and thinking. This experience has broadened my understanding of teaching and increased my appreciation for the profession.
Hi, my name is Giovanna DeVito. I'm at Herfa Elementary School, and I've had the opportunity to work with two classrooms. I'm in Ms. Babalino and Mississippio's 5th grade ELA classroom, and I'm also part of Ms. Guzak's ERI classroom. If you see the pictures up there, I had all the students in Ms. Guzak's room pick their favorite spot in the room and the emoji they used to cover their face, so that was all their decision, by the way. So up to this point in my experience at Herfa Elementary School, I've gained, learned numerous valuable lessons. I've been able to gain a new perspective on what it's like to be in a classroom and a new appreciation for the student-teacher connection from the teacher's view. In my 5th grade classroom, they are piloting a new curriculum, so it's a lot of observing for me, and I've been taking lots of notes. And in my downtime, I've had the opportunity to be a part of Ms. Guzak's elementary ERI class. This class has opened my eyes to exactly what I want to pursue after high school. In this environment, I've watched students learn to identify and understand their emotions, and I've had the ability to make, and have the ability to make decisions on their own. I know that many things in this class will stick with me throughout college and my career. Things like zones of regulation, special rooms when the students feel that they need an area to focus or to calm down, and their reward charts where students complete their tasks and learn the system of rewards. I've been able to witness many different academic levels, how these students are able to effortlessly work with the general education students, and I have learned to insert myself into the students' learning. Overall, this program has given me so much, and I cannot wait to continue to learn and grow.
Hi, I'm Janine Specht, and I am at Thomas Jefferson Elementary in Mr. Ring's 1st grade classroom. I had Mr. Ring as a 1st grade teacher in his first-ever class that he ever taught as a teacher, so it's kind of, you know, a nice moment. So my experience so far in this field experience has probably been one of the best things I've ever done in my entire life. I have always known that I wanted to be a teacher, and this only has solidified it more for me. Being able to see, like, the kids get excited when you come in the classroom and being able to see them learn new things every day. I'll come in one day, and they'll just want to tell me everything that they learned if I wasn't there the day before, and just being able to create those bonds with the kids, it's an undescribable feeling, like, I can't even, I can't even explain it. So I am beyond grateful for the opportunities that I've had, and I'm so excited for the rest of the field experience.
Hi, my name is Brianna Elliott. I am following Mrs. Walls at Orchard Valley Middle School. She teaches 6th grade ELA Special Education. During my field experience, I gained valuable insight into the classroom and deepened my understanding of education. I learned that all children have the potential to be great kids, and it's their reactions to situations that matter the most. A highlight was when I was teaching a lesson on emotions, where students connected the material and realized it's okay to feel different emotions. They also learned the importance of mental health and taking care of their emotional well-being. This experience reinforced my belief in patience, empathy, and the need to adapt teaching methods to meet each student's needs while fostering an inclusive and supportive learning empowerment. Thank you so much.
Lastly, we just want to say thank you to the building principals, cooperating teachers, and secretaries at every school for warmly welcoming our future educators. Your support, guidance, and generosity have provided invaluable learning experiences that will shape their journey in education.
We have certificates for all of you. I'm just going to read the certificate, and then I'll read off your names. It says, "The Washington Township Board of Education proudly acknowledges you. In recognition of your exceptional dedication, hard work, and commitment to the Future Educators Program at Washington Township High School, your passion for learning and future contributions to the field of education are truly inspiring. Congratulations on participating in this program and for taking the first step towards becoming a positive force in education. Your efforts are commendable, and we look forward to seeing the great impact you will make in the future." Presented February 25th, 2025, Dr. Eric Hibbs, Superintendent, and Julie Kazempel, Board of Education President. So Kaylee. Kaylee. Annabelle. Congratulations. Arabella. Brianna. Brianna. Janine. Anna. And Gia. We also have a certificate from Mrs. Mason. It reads, yes, "In recognition of your outstanding leadership and dedication as the leader of the Future Educators Program at Washington Township High School, your guidance, commitment, and inspiration have played a key role in shaping the program's success and fostering the next generation of educators. Your passion for education and unwavering support for the participants have left a lasting impact on all involved. We thank you for your exceptional contributions and leadership." Presented February 25, Dr. Hibbs and me. So if you'd like to go out in the hallway in front of the step and repeat for a photo, that would be great, and thank you so much. Thank you.
Just a really quick comment. As a retired teacher, it really makes me feel really good inside to see that these young people have the experience to work in a classroom, see what goes on, and maybe decide that's what they want to do. It just made me feel really good inside.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that anyone wishing to speak, address the board. You can take a yellow card from the corner. If you haven't been here before, they're in the corner. There's pens over there, and just if you could just give us your name and what you want to discuss. The first public comment section, which begins in a couple of minutes, is just for agenda items, and then there's a second comment section where you can talk about whatever you would like, and there's a five-minute timer. So next we have just open discussion items. Is there any discussion items? Okay. Mr. Distillio, would you like to give your report? And excuse my voice, it's coming and going.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Kazempel. Just want to highlight a few things. First of all, congratulations to Ms. Mason's crew and Mr. Cho's crew. Everybody was outstanding. Thank you for everybody that came out tonight. Also want to talk about, we had a successful preschool lottery on February 20. I apologize for not having the ability to get everybody into, into the preschool, but the lottery was successful, and we were able to pull a lot of students, and it's a very robust program. I want to make a special thank you to Mr. Pacina, Ms. Sims, Ms. McMahon, Ms. Sullivan, and Ms. Gerber for all the help they gave us during that time. Also want to highlight our education service professionals and Teachers of the Year tomorrow at the Town Council meeting at 6:00 PM. Town Council has asked that they honor them as well, so a handful of those that can make it will be there. So if you're able, and would like to celebrate, 6 o'clock tomorrow, Town Council meeting at the municipal building. And then finally, we'd like to highlight Mr. Jedwobny, and as a basketball coach, and students Madeline Coyle, Coralina Benetou, and Olivia Trebosch, they were published as We Are Township Leadership Podcast Number 7. So they're on the website now. They're also on Spotify and on WT TV. They did a fantastic job. Mr. Lindstedt and I finished filming yesterday our last episodes. We were at the high school talking to Coach Shatzman, Calvin Spencer, and Coach Fraction Mills, and their students. So want to thank Mr. Lindstedt for all the help he gave us this year. Please tune in. Every two weeks, a new one will be released, and there's 15 total episodes, about a half-hour piece. So thank you to all those students, and we'll do something at the end of the year to celebrate all those students that were involved. But that is my report for this evening. Thank you, Ms. Kazempel.
Thank you, Mr. Distillio. Any items for old business? Oops, sorry, I skipped. Correspondence. Can I get a motion to approve correspondence items 1 and 2?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 7, January 21, and January 28, both public and executive?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion on this? No. Do we roll call this? No? I don't want to approve these, because there's things in here that are not correct. So how do I do that if we're not roll calling it? But can we just do a roll call? Okay, roll call.
Ms. Baker. We're roll calling the minutes. January 7, January 21, January 28.
Do we need a discussion if there's an issue with them?
I didn't remember seeing them on here until today, so I haven't looked through them, but the first few I looked through, and there's incorrect information. We could table it to next meeting. We don't need to approve them, right? Okay, can I make a motion to table them until February?
Motion.
Second.
I already had a motion to roll call it, though.
I know.
We send the motion to roll call and vote, and the motion is to table them to the next meeting so that we have a chance to review them. I got through, I did not even see these on here until tonight. I got through three of them and already found, like, the wrong info, so. I need more time. I don't know.
So Steve, you motioned?
He just made a new motion, so I'll motion her new motion.
Right.
Because she rescinded the old one. So I'm going to motion her new motion. Yes.
Thank you.
I rescinded the roll call. I already, I rescinded roll call, and we're voting to table it until we can look at all of these. Am I, am I nuts? I don't remember seeing these on here yesterday. Like, I read everything, so I didn't, I don't remember when they were. Maybe they were put up late, and I just didn't have an opportunity to look at them. Oh, that's me, then. I must have just not seen the attachments. Oh, you did see them. Oh, okay, well, I mean, then I'm the only one that. Okay. So we have to roll call this to table? Yes. Roll call, please.
Ms. Baker.
Everything under minute, approval of minutes, number four. I mean, number F.
Yeah.
Letter F?
Letter F.
Still getting over the flu a month later.
Mrs. Baker.
You got it, Ori. She said yes. She didn't say it loud enough.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla? Absent. Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kazempel?
Yes, motion carries. Anyone have old business?
Julie, I have a quick question.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that we know exactly what our task is on that, so we don't know what to correct if things need to be corrected.
I just need to read through them and send my corrections.
Perfect.
But if anyone else has them, obviously.
Okay, great.
Items of old business? Anyone on the board? Bring up. No, okay. Sure. Motion to open to the public?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Randy Ford?
Good evening. Just three items. The first one, no one uses their microphone. I'm in the second row. I can't hear it. I'm sure people in the back can't hear it. There's things being talked about, rescinding motions, other things. There's a microphone. I've asked a couple times. It's really just, people want to know what happens, and we can't understand if there's a bunch of side conversations and things like that. I don't know OPMA with respect to side conversations while having a meeting, but that's just, I ask that, please use your microphones. The second thing is, those presentations were amazing, but they started at 7:45. I know you have executive business before the meeting. I understand you get here at 6. You spend a lot of hours. It takes two minutes at 7:20, 7:25 to adjourn, come out of executive session. If you need to go back in, have the elementary students come up, present, then they can go home, because it's, you know, 8:25. I'm not saying that my kids go to bed before 9, but, you know, again, just something, the meeting should start on time. Just the last thing is on agenda item, I think it's N24. This is RFP 25-029. I went through all of the materials that were provided to the public. I would just ask that before everyone votes, if there's some type of presentation, there's a lot of hard costs in here, what first-year annual services means, you know, just all the numbers that are being involved, because there was a lot of disparity or a lot of different numbers with respect to 14 million, 16 million first-year costs, some had 500,000, some had 40, different percentages in terms of, I guess, the amount of the projects financed. So it's kind of difficult to understand what all that means just with that information. So if there's a way to provide more information about that before voting on it, that would be awesome. So thank you again, and have a great night.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Ms. Wector is going to respond about the RFP.
The items on the agenda is for us to approve at this time an energy services company, which is a professional service. We have been going through an energy audit. We've gone through the process of each building being walked and projects developed where there would be an energy savings that would help us pay back money that we would borrow for the projects. It's a tax-neutral borrowing. So the next step in the process, after doing the audits, they're preliminary audits, now we work with our engineering professionals and the energy services company to develop a more detailed plan. A larger-scale audit is done. Once, once we appoint the professional, we actually work with the professional to develop more of a plan. So the cost that you see mapped out is a preliminary plan of what they think that they could do for us based on their assessment of our facilities. Once we pick the energy services company, they work with us to develop all the projects that we want to get done. So all the projects are geared towards energy savings, so it would be a lot of lighting projects that we would do. We could get HVAC work done to make, you know, some of our units more efficient. You can also build in other projects that, you know, would save energy, just maybe not as, as long-term as some of the HVAC and lighting. The, some of the other costs, let me just go to that, that item so I can speak to it. Okay, the total finance project cost, that again is an estimate based on the plan that they developed prior to having our input and doing the fuller scale audit. So right there, a higher number would be better, because that's the number of projects that the company identified that could save us money. The hard, the percentage of hard cost financed, the lowest number is the best. For us, which is basically cost that we would pay professionals that would be outside of the energy savings project, again, this is going to fluctuate depending on what our final plan is. And you can see the company that's being selected is the second to the lowest. The percentage that is listed there is insignificant based on our interview with the companies. The, the last item also can vary. It's the first-year annual services, so that is projects that they put together that can be done in the first year and provide the energy savings right away. Again, this is a competitive contracting process, so it's similar to RFP. The proposals are accepted, and we interviewed all four of these vendors along with our insurance carrier, I mean, I'm sorry, with our engineer and asked them very detailed questions, ranging from their experience to other projects that they, other schools that they work with, and then their specific plan for us and what it could be. After we get done with the audit and develop a full-scale plan and possibly include options that are available to us, like solar projects, we could end up with up to $30 million in, in energy savings projects for the school. Anything else?
Thank you, Ms. Wector. Okay, April Renzetti?
I'm going to try really hard to stay within my five minutes. I know that's a problem for some, but if I don't, I'm going to need to come back, okay, because I have a lot. Good evening, Dr. Hibbs and Board of Education. I am here tonight as a taxpayer, a community member, an educator of almost 30 years, a friend, a colleague, and the high school vice president for the WTEA. There is so much that needs to be discussed, fixed, and brought to light. I'm going to do my very best to get through as much as I can in my allotted time. I'd like to begin with what I call the ripple effect. Financial cuts, the ripple effect. Safety, the ripple effect. The educational process and success of our students and the ripple effect. At the board meeting last year, specifically May 21, in the 1112 auditorium, I asked if the rumor was true that the substitute service was being eliminated. While your response was, and I quote, "We are absolutely not cutting the subservice," it didn't clarify or explain that while you're not cutting the service, you were drastically cutting and reducing how many subs each school would be limited to have. Semantics, Dr. Hibbs. All classes will be housed in the RBPAC at the high school and a holding room at the middle level. By the way, has the communication gone home at the middle level that this is new practice? If we are lucky, there will only be about three to five classes in the RBPAC at the high school. However, on any given day, it is much more than that, with typically only maybe three substitutes to man behaviors, bathroom usage, and exit doors. This is an accident waiting to happen. Let's not forget the kids that will attempt to sneak out to leave the building. I mean, they are high school kids after all. What would these parents be told if something happened to their child who couldn't remain in their classroom to work on their academics because you cut substitutes? When exactly are we going to be proactive instead of reactive? A theme, a question, and a statement that I state every time I come to this podium. We are on the doorstep of major problems. My favorite saying is, "We're on fire, no one cares." How will you handle the parents and the community knowing this is one of the areas you cut to save money, yet you are looking to gain a $20,000 merit goal? We don't have a budget problem. You have a priority problem. The ripple effect. Since you came onboard, everyone you hired, including non-unit employees, have received aggressively high salaries and raises. Yet you cut programs and substitutes. If money is that bad, and if we are that broke, if we have nothing as you desperately are trying to convince this community, how do you explain the exorbitant amount of salaries you have given out since you have been hired? How does this Board of Education, knowing that, approve those salaries if we are in a so-called financial crisis? It saddens me, after being here for almost 30 years, that people always wanted to be here simply on our reputation alone. No longer the case. Unfortunately, teachers and families are now running out of here at rapid speed. We appear to hire administrators with very little experience in the educational process and today's culture of kids, resulting in candidates not best suited for the jobs. The ripple effect. The educational process and the expectations of academic success have been drastically dropped. Who gives a floor of 50 for half a semester, knowing full well that mathematically, students at the high school can do absolutely nothing for semester two and still pass? The ripple effect. We have students that are actually telling teachers at the high school, "I don't have to do anything, nothing. I'm good for the rest of the year." Thank you, Dr. Nathan, for giving the already overworked teachers continual discipline problems now to deal with. The ripple effect. By the way, these problems do exist, as I do come here and speak, I do come, do not come here and speak in hypotheticals or assumptions, but rather in facts. I'm a valued member of the high school community and to this district. I am often looked at as a source of help by many. My people are drowning, and we are on fire. You have given us a very unnecessary and unrealistic situation. How does this get our students prepared for life and for the future? It doesn't. You are setting them up for failure. Do nothing, get nothing. Do nothing, still pass? It's not how the real world works. Last week, our liaison committee met with Dr. Hibbs and his administration to go over issues in all of the buildings. The WTEA would like to... The WTEA would like to know if those issues are ever shared with the Board of Education. Board of Education members, are you aware of the issues the WTEA brings to Dr. Hibbs? One of the issues brought to you, because of your substitute cuts, was, if there is a building that needs coverage, but not enough subs are available, the ICS special education teacher is being pulled to cover those classes. So your decision to cut substitutes is more important than a teacher providing services to our students, which we are legally bound to provide, and is our educational responsibility. The ripple effect. Please do not devalue our worth, and our responsibility to our students. We are on fire. The changes you are making are not for the best educational purposes.
That was five minutes, April. Sorry.
Can I come back a second?
Yeah.
Okay. Hold on.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson, you want to come up and address at least the safety concern piece?
Yes.
Please, thank you. I'll be happy to address other portions.
So, in regard to the safety concern, a couple things. So, we were asked to start consolidating our substitutes, which we did. And it began last year. We have done it a total of 12 days so far this year. It's not a common occurrence. We do the best that we can to make, to work with what we have. I would say, as far as safety concerns go, we do have administrators and teachers that go in and out all day, and do check in. Is it the most ideal? Do I love it? No. But we're making it work to the best of our abilities, and with the restrictions that we were given, with the parameters we were given. So, any other questions?
Any concerns, security-wise?
I do not, no. I feel like we're in and out of there enough to...
Thank you.
Control it as best we can.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Yes.
No, I'm saying, thank you. I don't think that you should be, I really don't think you should be responding to this question, it puts you in a really bad spot. So, I, thank you for your comment. Dr. Hibbs, as you know, I have raised concerns about this issue, and other board members have raised concerns about this issue. And the fact that it's done as a cost savings measure, instead of in case of an emergency, which is my understanding of how it should be used, is a problem, I think, safety-wise. So, can we look at another way to deal with this, other than putting kids in a holding room? You know, sometimes up to 150 kids, with two adults that are substitutes. And it's, there are other ways we can save money, other than that. That's my opinion. But I'll let you finish your response.
Yeah, sure. I mean, board members, I think you've received, I think at this point, it's four times I responded. Did everybody get all of my responses, all those times?
Yes.
Okay. So, just so you know, I respond when I'm asked to relay concerns. And I did. You know, that day, particularly, on the 30th, I received multiple emails from you. I responded to the whole board, I believe, twice that day. One at around 9:30, one at 8:23, I think, at night, letting you know that we had no safety concerns. So, you know, there's times, for sure, where it's plausible to bring people up to have conversations, to ask their opinions, and I think Mr. Anderson is very suited to do that. Mr. Anderson was in the room that day, and Mr. Anderson, just with a nod, three to five is typical. Three to five classrooms that day, was right in line with what we had, correct?
That is typically if we have had...
You know, it's really no different in that way than an assembly. So, what we did, and just so everyone's clear, and Mr. Sweeney can certainly attest to this, guys, hold on. Mr. Sweeney can certainly attest that I gave no order to cut substitutes. What we did was, is that we're taking a look at the amount of money we had budgeted for substitutes, and we were, when we're looking long-range, we were going to have way less than what we needed, so we had to do a stopgap measure, to try to save money. That's what we did. We did not sacrifice safety. To say that we're on fire, I absolutely do not agree with that, in any way, shape, or form, neither to Mr. Anderson, in numerous conversations. You know, I understand that people can have absolute opinions, and I respect your right to have so. I think the administrators we've hired are incredible people, just like all the staff we hire. We try to hire the right kind of person. I know you mentioned the floor. We are absolutely happy to assist with any teacher in this district. If they're finding a child that's lacking motivation in that way, to have personal conversations, just reach out, and we can have conversations. Happy to do that. The liaison concern that was shared with me, I will say my response, and I, you know, we, safety and supervision is paramount. So, we seek to pull any form of a special education teacher, dead last. And when we have to pull, we try to pull fairly and appropriately. But supervision trumps everything. But, we obviously try not to pull from special education classrooms. Mrs. Miller, anything else you want to add to that? Dr. Nathan, is there anything you want to talk about with the floor?
Thank you. Just as far as substitutes, you know, we really value being able to conduct professional development. You know, it's a learning organization. All of us are always learning and growing. In order to do that, we have to be creative with solutions, for having our students be able to have asynchronous assignments, much like a study hall. These strategies have been tried in other districts for years, and utilized for years. So, they're not, they're brand-new here, but they're not brand-new. And the goal is that we're able to, be able to have our students have that substitute coverage, so that we can have our professional development. And teachers, of course, have sickened personal time as well. So, you know, looking for solutions that are going to keep our goals clear, and professional development being one of those main goals, in being able to conduct that. As far as the floor, I have a lot of confidence in our staff. I saw the presentations tonight. I see a lot of students who are highly motivated. They don't want to just pass a class. They want to get an A. They want to show colleges, they want that dual credit. They're working hard. And there are individuals who may be disengaged. It's an opportunity to build a relationship. We talked about with the grading team, building strategies and toolkits that can help us with students who feel that lack of motivation now, and truly kind of digging into what strategies are available. Because I have faith in the talents of the teachers within this district, to motivate all of our students. And that's not an easy task, and you heard from our future educators, already valuing the challenges of the profession. But I know you change lives every day, and if we can affect those students, who are now disaffected, that's a great opportunity to help build our toolkits.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Nathan, yes.
Dr. Hibbs, not to throw you a curveball, because I didn't know this was going to be a discussion.
Sure.
But, if our admins have teaching certifications, why can't they step in and sub during the day?
So, admin would step in and sub if we were at a level of absolute need. In that moment, devaluing what an administrator does, is not the administrative call in that moment. So that was not a call that I had to make in that moment. If that was the case, then what would have happened is, a building principal would have called me directly, like Mr. Anderson, and he would have shared, "I am dramatically understaffed today, and I need help." That did not happen, in any way, shape, or form. So, that question was asked of me, and, you know, I explained it multiple times, that that pull should happen in extraordinary circumstances. That was not an extraordinary circumstance. We were honestly trying to explore ways to still cover children, and still save money on substitutes in that realm. But it was framed as, it was unsafe, it was, you know, it was framed, you know, in a lot of ways. You know, I asked for information on, you know, people that specifically complained, I was not provided that information to reach out. So, you know, I think I responded numerous times to the Board of Education. I know everyone said they received all of my correspondence. Whether you agree, that's totally your call, but they were fully informed.
Well, we were informed, but we're not allowed to read anything from the emails to the public. But, you know, would you consider this, I'm asking you now, a cost-saving measure? Would you consider this a cost-saving measure?
Yeah, I've already, I mean, board members, you already received my response on that, correct? Trying to make sure everyone has it. So, when I responded very in-depth to all the board, we were, we are looking for cost-saving measures across the board, that still supervise children. And that's exactly what we did there. You know, for anyone, you know, to talk about, you know, whether or not a child is walking the hallway, if you've ever walked Washington Township High School, kids are walking the hallway all the time. So, I have full confidence, you know, and Mr. Anderson and I have had numerous conversations about this. And, you know, there weren't no security concerns in that moment. You do not have to like the fact, but it was an administrative call that was made. Dr. Hibbs, can I jump in there real quick, too?
I think the one question that came up was, why haven't community members at the middle school level been notified of this? Because it hasn't happened at the middle school level?
It has. Yes, it has. We have a parent of the next child in high school, who is out of town.
Yeah, so, that was not a director of conversation we've had at the middle level?
Yep.
So, that's something we'll have to look at, but that's news to me. At the high school level, too, you know, Mr. Anderson, I think we have, what, 13 building-based subs that report daily? So we still are supplying a good number of subs, who are reporting every single day, to the middle school, in addition to other subs who are brought in for daily purposes. And, you know, as we talked about, when we're looking at financial data from September to December last year, compared to how much was spent September through December this year, the amount that we have spent on subs this year, has been astronomically much higher than where we were at last year. So, we're trying to be creative, find ways to save money, but still provide support.
But I just want to say, too, like, causation and correlation are two different things. And to Ms. Renzetti's point about the ripple effect, you have more needs for subs, because you have way more PD, because they have way more technology that they need to learn. It's not like they're just calling out of work for no reason. They have to leave to do professional development, as Dr. Nathan stated. So, when you do that, you need to know, we need more subs, not, we're putting the kids in the RBPAC to do that. It's just, as a parent, I have a problem with this. And, I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, I'm going to get ethics filed against me again, I already have it now, for bringing it up the first time. File away. Okay, Brianna Elliott.
Wait, hold up. Okay.
Can you finish the public comment, Sue, when you guys are done? Is that good?
Okay. My personal opinion, coming from the teacher perspective, and I know I've had a couple of discussions with Mr. Sweeney, which he's answered, you know, really well, but my concern still is, too many children, not well-supervised. Personal opinion.
I got a just a question. Why is it, go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you. Am I recognized, Mr. President?
Yeah, yes.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry.
So, just a couple comments. I mean, to think we're going to be able to keep doing the same thing we've been doing for all the past years, is not possible. It doesn't take a genius to look at, we are capped in how much revenue we can raise. It is a 2% cap on taxes. We know that that's approximately $1.8 to $1.9 million, right? If the governor lets us go higher, we'll have the ability to go higher, if the board votes to increase above the cap. But, that's it. We don't have any other way to make money. The costs are going up, and going up. Transportation costs are going up, salary raises, all that stuff. It's going to exceed 1.8. So, the administration has to come up with some creative ways to save money, or we are going to cease to exist, and cease to function. Some of them are going to work well, some of them are not going to work well. But we don't have a choice of doing things the same way that we always did. And to say that the superintendent's not being proactive, he just went out and found a way to get us potentially $30 million, that we weren't going to do before, which is going to hopefully fix a lot of the capital needs that we have here. As far as not caring about administrative salaries, you know, as a board member myself, every time I vote on an administrative salary, I ask the question, "How's this going to be funded?" And it's usually funded with the cut of another position. So it's not like these things are just being added. There's a lot going into this, and there's a lot to juggle, but you can just look at any other district around in New Jersey, they're all going through the same thing. And we've got to get creative, or this, you know, we've got to figure out the best way to provide an education to the kids, with what we have. It's unfortunate, but it's the reality of where we are.
I got it. I just, is it, why is it devaluing to an administrator, for them to roll up their sleeves in an emergent issue, and step in to help the people that they're supposed to serve as leaders? I don't understand that. That's the epitome of leadership. I don't understand why anyone would take that as being devalued.
And my student standing here. Every single day, I am in the hallway, you ask a question about administrators and what we do. I am rolling my sleeves up every day.
I understand, Mr. Anderson, but you're out of order.
I understand. But I want to say that, because I don't understand where that comment came from, because we're constantly, constantly out, in the public, constantly.
That comment came from the superintendent, who said it was devaluing to the administrators.
Nope, nope. Sorry, Ray, I don't want to do it, Ray. I don't want to do it, Ray, please. Can you just put a card in, Ray?
So then, that wouldn't apply to you, right? That wouldn't apply to you, it would apply to the administrators who feel devalued, when they have to step into a classroom.
All right, Steve.
So, here's the answer. The answer is this, you know, if the call needed to be made, and listen, I understand that everybody has opinions, and I understand that everybody is heated right now. The reality is, is that we have to focus on what's best for kids, period. Individual decisions can always be picked apart and not liked, period, right? But we have to be respectful to each other. So here is the answer. What was that? That's, yeah, I was in the middle of talking. And actually talking about respect, in that moment. So, who is that that keeps interrupting?
I don't know. I don't know, but can we let this girl speak?
Well, I want to be able to finish, but we're not going to have that. So, the reality is, if it was an emergent need, we would have pulled administrators. Administrators all over this district work tirelessly, 100%, and you could see Mr. Anderson's passion back there. They do, there's over 2,100 children in that high school, and there is, you know, there are six administrators, not counting supervisors, that ensure that we run effectively. So, had I had any supervision concerns, I would have gone over to substitute a classroom. We did not need it. It is okay, that you don't like the call, that was the call. Sorry.
Hi, I'm a future educator. I'm piggybacking off of Mrs. Renzetti, as a former student, from my sophomore year. As a student, and as a member of the Future Educator Program, I really do see that the RBPAC is a problem. And I, so I go to Orchard Valley Middle School, two to three days a week, and our cafeteria alone is as, just as bad. Yes. Honestly, a little better. It's kind of sad to see, because you would think younger kids would act out a little more, but, so, this past week, I was in the RBPAC, two days in a row, and as a, and I'm not in there as much, but I don't, I don't really know. But, I have seen kids walking out, and as a future educator, I kind of want to, I look around, and I see, is anyone going to do anything? And I just stay seated. The RBPAC really isn't a good learning environment, because kids in general, when there isn't a substitute, they don't like to do the work, and I will be honest, I am a victim of that. Motivation isn't always there, but there are no chargers, no outlets in the RBPAC, which is a key problem. There, the seats aren't as, you know, not everyone likes the seats, they're not comfortable, but that's not really the point. It's not a good learning environment, just because of us sitting in rows divided by classes, isn't as great. And I'll see kids a period before, and they won't be there the next period. So, it's all about motivation, but as a student in the Future Educator Program, I see that it is a very big problem. see that it is a very big problem. And I feel like people were saying, like, kids want to reach for the A and the B and everything. As a senior, I've been in that school for my whole life, not, like, in the school district. I've grown up with my friends. I have seen the motivation decrease and decrease and decrease. And, as a senior, I work a part-time job, and I'm a future educator as well. So, I don't have the motivation. I go to Wawa every morning and get my big cup of coffee. That's my motivation. But, that's not the point. I do really see, though, that the RBPAC is a very big problem. I physically can't learn in there. I can't focus on my assignments when a substitute is yelling across the room to a kid acting out. And I see it, and I can't do anything because I'm not, I'm not stiff. But, yeah. Thank you.
She said exactly what I was going to say.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought Callie wanted to speak, but she said, she was going to say exactly what you said. Connie, did you want to go?
Yeah, I just, I just want to ask a question. Maybe Dr. Hibbs or someone can kind of educate me on this. I know each month, there are a lot of transfers that occur in the, in the, in the finance. And, when I'm hearing that we didn't budget enough for substitutes, how come we're not doing a transfer, putting more money in? Because if, if, if the concern is to focus on kids, that, that they need to have someone in there, and so our substitutes are, are educated people that, you know, provide an education. And I'm just wondering if, why that's not a priority? If we don't have, if we didn't budget enough money, and it cost them more, why aren't we looking at doing an account transfer? Because we do that regularly. Now, I could be wrong, that's what I'm saying. Just educate me why we can't do that.
Yeah, and, and Mr. Sweeney, when we did our analysis, it, it's not as if we didn't budget enough. Our costs from the, the date ranges that you talked about were going to exceed what we budgeted. It's not as if we undercut what we thought, we're just spending more than honestly what we planned. Correct, sir?
Correct. And, I'm just looking at numbers here in front of me, again, you know, comparisons from September, December of last year to where we were this year. This year, we were over, I want to say at least, I'm, I'm just, I didn't do the numbers exactly, but over $80,000 more spent in that period this year compared to last year. So, again, trying to, to be creative to, to reduce those costs. And yes, it's professional development to a degree, it's, people are sick, people have personal time, people are on leaves, and we're trying to fill those positions. But know that, it, it costs a lot of money.
And, and the answer to Janine is that i-if we didn't have money in the account, we would have transferred in, correct?
Yeah, and so, transferring is always an option, but when you're looking at the shortfall that we are, the question is, you know, and we talk about it during the budget process, years and years of cutting and cutting and cutting, there aren't lines that we know there's going to be excess every year. So, at this point in the year, we can't sit back and go, oh, we're going to have a ton of money in that account, and we're going to transfer it. Like, those are the dollars that we're talking about. So, then it becomes a matter of, if there's nowhere else where there's additional money, are we cutting a program in the middle of the year? Are we trying to look for cost savings, which is, is, is what's happening right now?
So, I think the best thing to do is to put this into committee, now that we have committees back. I haven't told everyone what committees they're on since last week, but, um, because you are talking, you're talking about priorities. So, I would say, and, you know, I don't know if this would go into the Business and Finance Committee, that's where I would put it, or Student Activities and Personnel, where Sean would be there. But I don't want to keep putting administrators on the spot answering these questions. I want to put it into committee and do it the right way. And I want to address Mr. Anderson, because everyone up here respects Mr. Anderson. I don't even think Steve's comments were directed at you and the administrators in your building. We know you're drowning over there, and we're trying to help you. And, and, you know, you had mentioned that it, you're, you're going to deal with whatever you're given, and we're, so I don't think that that was meant to say that you could be doing something more. Obviously, you're, you're doing what you need to be doing. So, and we just want to get you more support for that, if anything. So, I'm sorry I had to gavel you. But, that, I just wanted to say that to you and address that. Like, we know you're working hard. We do know that.
Yeah. Just one follow-up. Thank you for that explanation. What I'm thinking, you know, during the course of the year, there's one place that we do get money after we do the budget, and that's in breakage. And we know that there's, there's breakage. I mean, I've, I've seen on the, on the agendas, people that are leaving, and they're at the top of the guy. Maybe, maybe the breakage money could go into the substitutes. It's all about paying for teachers. So, you know, the breakage money, there's breakage money there that was not budgeted in the budget. Maybe that's somewhere that we could look at. Just, just throwing that out there.
Yep. And just referring to breakage, we've talked about this a number of times as well, too. We budget breakage, so we, during the budget process, in order to balance, we reduce our salary lines anticipating the breakage. So, there really isn't any. Again, and again, years and years of cuts. We have less and less left over at the end of every year. So, you'll see this year when we do our budget, we have less surplus to budget, which is a direct reduction of the revenue, and that equals a cut on the appropriation side.
And, just to jump in again, we, we've spent, as of January 1, we were $86,000 more this year compared to last year. So, we are spending a lot of money on substitutes. In grand total, throughout the district, Jan-, uh, September through December, it was over $1.7 million on subs. It's a, it's a lot of money being put into subs. So, to say that we're not funding that, it's not accurate.
Do you, do you categorize, Sean, what someone is getting sub coverage for? Like, does, if it's for PD or sickness or PTO?
Yeah, that filters through the, the building administrators.
All right, great. So, we can analyze that in committee. Okay. Michelle Geetens.
For those of you who don't know me, my name is Michelle Geetens. I will probably be part of that breakage this year, after a very long time of teaching here in this district. Haven't made my final decision yet, but things are swaying me in that direction. So, good evening, Dr. Hibbs, and members of the board. As a lifelong resident of Washington Township and a former three-sport student-athlete at WTHS, played with Mr. Ross's daughter for some of those years, I can confidently say that I understand the dedication and perseverance required to achieve success. After graduating from high school in 1986 and playing two Division I sports in college, thanks to my coaches and teachers at Washington Township, in 1990, I graduated with my bachelor's degree. Upon graduation, I pursued a career in advertising sales. However, I soon realized that financial rewards alone were not fulfilling. My true calling was in education, leading me to become a special education teacher at WTHS in 1997. I later earned a master's degree in reading education, which has been instrumental throughout my teaching career. I feel truly blessed that my husband and I were able to build our lives here, raising our three amazing sons in the community we love. And thank you, Mr. Cho, for teaching all three of my sons to play chess. My background in athletics and professional experiences has reinforced my belief in the importance of a structured, fair, and supporting learning environment for all students. I stand before you today, sorry, I am going to get upset, but, not just as a teacher, but as an advocate for academic integrity and student accountability. In my 20 years of teaching, I have witnessed countless policies come and go, each with its own impact on teachers, student learning, and motivation. However, I must express my deep concern regarding two policies that I believe are fundamentally detrimental to our students. The lack of accountability for lateness in attendance, and the egregious practice of implementing a 50-floor grade in the second semester. Just today, I had a student who refused to do work, and he said, I quote, "It doesn't matter because I already passed all my classes for the year." Last week, he told me he wasn't going to do anything major. He said he will do regular stuff, but why would he bother doing a major assignment? He went as far to say that the grading policy is stupid. This policy essentially enables a student who earns a 70 or above in the first semester to do absolutely no work in the second semester and still pass for the year. Think about that. A student can simply disengage, refuse to complete assignments, skip assessments, and ignore instruction, and yet still receive a passing grade. Of all the policies I've encountered, this one presents the greatest challenges to effective teaching and student success. Decisions like these should be made with a clear understanding of classroom dynamics and the real-world consequences of academic and disciplinary leniency. Yet, they are being created and implemented by individuals who do not stand in front of students every day, who do not experience the struggles of trying to engage already unmotivated learners, and who do not see firsthand the message this sends to our students, that effort, responsibility, and perseverance do not matter. We are effectively telling our students that they do not have to try, that they can put in the bare minimum and still succeed. We are removing the fundamental life lesson that hard work and dedication are necessary for achievement. This is not just an issue of grades. It is an issue of character development, of work ethic, and of preparing students for the realities that will, that they will face beyond these walls. Additionally, the lack of accountability for lateness in attendance exasperates this problem. If students know they will pass regardless of their effort or presence, why should they show up? How can we, as educators, instill discipline, responsibility, and a love of learning when the very structure that should support these values is being undone? I urge you to reconsider these policies with the input of those who see their effects firsthand, teachers. We need policies that foster responsibility, engagement, and a true commitment of learning. I ask you to listen to those of us who do this every day and make the necessary changes before we lose an entire generation of students to apathy and entitlement. And I want to thank Mr. Anderson. He has been more than supportive of me and all of our administrators, quite honestly. I just, I don't, I think we're disconnected. I think somehow, we've got to come together for these future educators. I see, I'm looking around this room, and I see my former students, I see parents of my former students, and I just, something's wrong. Something has to change. It's not right the way it is. It's not working the way it is.
Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
Let me begin, if you don't mind, by addressing something that I heard Scott make reference to, that the board is constantly looking for ways to save money, raise money, and that's fine. So then, how is it justified to give those additional raises to so many administrators over here at Central? Why? That doesn't make sense. You're looking for money, you're looking for ways to raise money, and yet I keep seeing all the raises being issued to those individuals. I'm confused. I was very proud at the beginning of this meeting this evening, because I saw the little ones come up having learned to play chess. I love to play chess. To me, it's like, as a history person, chess to me is like structuring a, a battle in a war, and making sure that you can kind of move in advance, play the game three moves in advance. That is amazing what they have been able to accomplish. Then I see the future educators come up. And again, my pride was like overwhelmed, overwhelming. For those of you who aren't aware of it, this is my 54th year of teaching. 37 years in this district, 17 in a prior district. I would not trade it for anything in the world. Why? Because of what you saw tonight, because of the little people that came up and were part of that chess club, because of the future educators. That's why I'm still in it after 54 years. And I, again, would not trade that for anything in the world. I would not even dare to ask if there's anybody in the room that I had the opportunity to teach. Figure I'd be embarrassed, to be honest with you. But, I did come up here tonight to try to at least present some kind of positivity. I wanted to come up and thank the members of the Board of Education. Thank you for each of the following. First, eliminating the Green Club at all six elementary buildings, which would have benefited our children tremendously at a very minimal cost. That would have been another group that maybe might be coming up here to receive recognition for their accomplishments. I want to also thank the board, the administrators who made the decision to eliminate the newspaper club at all six elementary schools. Again, that would have benefited our children at a minimal cost, I would think. The elimination last year through budget cuts of the intermural programs at our middle schools, that would have benefited our kids as well. And then we look at some of the staffing moves. The counselors, as an example, who are now being asked to once again be site coordinators, site testing coordinators, a job which they were previously, two years ago, paid to do, now there's no funding for it. All these things I thank you for, we thank you for, since it appears as though we were able to save the district sufficient funds to provide the board with the ability to pay the additional monies for the superintendent achieving his goals, worth and receiving bonuses of over $21,000 before the end of the school year. Kind of reminds me of some things that other people have made reference to, our grading policy, where a, a young person in our school district can earn a 7D the first semester and do nothing for the rest of the year and still pass for the year. Hopefully, our superintendent, now that he's at that point of achieving those goals, will not take the same approach and do nothing for the remainder of the year. Thank you.
Oh, go ahead, Scott.
Yeah, since I was specifically called out there. So, the raises that I vote for as an individual, I ask a bunch of questions, I do research, I'm a numbers person, and try to be common sense. And I'm going to get a whole bunch of snickering and comments for that, but when you sit up here, you have a responsibility to be fair to everyone. The raises I voted for for administrators were less than what was budgeted, was less than averages I've seen of any of the other groups that were given raises. And, to say that we don't value our admins and our non-unit people, I mean, I, I don't think that that's right. And, I voted my conscience on that, and I'll stand by it. The budget has to be looked at in totality. I don't think you can look at it from one sliver. Regarding merit pay, and I'm not going to speak specifically about our superintendent, but in general, that is a contracted item, and we should be in the business of honoring our contracts, especially when somebody fulfilled what they were asked to do in a documented metric-type goal. So, that's it.
Terri Schechter.
I was not prepared for some of the level of discourse this evening. I do want to thank everyone who got up to speak, all the educators, the participants and the board. What I hear and observe as a non-educator is a lot of passion and a lot of frustration on both sides. I just wish it wasn't creating this adversarial reaction. I... I understand people are doing what they can, but I don't see that anything was really accomplished so far this evening, unfortunately. I had a couple of things based on last meeting during the working session. It was brought up about pay-school lunch problems and the negative balances. I wanted to share my experiences. There might be an issue with the vendor there and the site not functioning. I have set up the automatic refill for my student. It's supposed to refund the balance when it hits $5. That never happens, and I get no emails or notices. So, there might be some issue with the vendor in that case. I also was a participant, loser participant, in the preschool lottery, unfortunately. Did not work out for me. But as I watched anxiously as they drew all those numbers for the three-year-old spots, I noticed a trend that I think there's an opportunity to poll the lottery applicants about. All the Grenlock spots, including the waitlist, was filled up before even like five seats in the Kindle location was filled up. So, I think there's an opportunity to understand, and maybe it just happens to be the weird selection of the wheel, but I think there's an opportunity to understand why families were electing Grenlock only, which meant that they were like having their chance, right? So, if they selected Grenlock only, that meant they weren't going to accept a spot at Kindle. So, I think that's an interesting result that I noticed while I was participating in the live, and I think emails went out to participants who were selected, but I think there's an opportunity to poll parents who participate in the lottery to understand better, design the program going forward. Thanks. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Some of the issues can't get resolved tonight, but we are putting them, I have like a ticker list, we're putting them into committee. So, especially for the kids that were here, for the future educators, I know Mrs. Mason gives them assignments where they have to watch our board meetings, and I really want them to see us following up on this stuff, so I do have a running list.
Nicole LaNudi.
Hi. You mentioned committees a couple times, so I wanted to just speak briefly on that. I was watching the board meeting from last week. I was completely baffled why most of you have voted to go back to committees over having a full board committee, especially going into budget, and after hearing all of the concerns tonight from these students and educators. Committees for this group, unfortunately, seems nothing but counterproductive and shady. I'm not sure how many people continuously watch the board meetings, but all you guys do is argue. Nobody trusts each other. Half of you have done shady things to each other and the district. If I sat on a board with this type of dynamic, I would never trust that any of you meet alone and then have the integrity to bring it back to the superintendent or other board members without it being overshadowed or skewed in some way. There's been so much that came out tonight between students and educators that they are the things that need to be talked about. Behind closed doors and especially sitting up here, that's where your conversation needs to go, not arguing with each other. There's been so many wasted minutes and hours at these meetings blaming each other for things that you do to each other instead of trying to fix all of these problems at hand. How you're going to pay aides better, how we're going to fix the problems that all of these educators and even students are addressing, your breath isn't going into that. And it's not just moving forward because they were addressed tonight. This has been since last year. I'm really shocked that any of you, how you feel about each other and knowing the dynamic with each other, voted to go back to committees after watching the way that you treat each other and the lack of respect and the lack of trust that you have in each other. I would think that having committees, private committees, creates a pathway that leads to more problems. It opens the door to arguing more. It's not transparent. It is not trustworthy. You're literally segregating yourself instead of making a conscious choice to work together in front of the public while everybody has a say and everybody has an opinion. When you have a committee with just three people, what gets to the superintendent or what gets to the rest of the board may never get there. If you want to be more open and you want to be more transparent and you want to address everything that these people have been fighting for over and over and over, I would think, as a parent and a resident, that having an open committee and having a full board discussion on these important topics is going to give you the best result. It's going to instill trust in each other where you're not going to have, this one left me out of this conversation, and this one did this behind my back, and this committee met without us. And that's all you spend these meetings doing, is blaming each other for what you weren't included in, and now you want to separate yourselves. I'm asking you that, as a board, it is reconsidered at this point until you can work better together because there are some hefty, hefty problems here in the district that need full attention, they need focus, they need everything out of you to fix it. And from watching what has unfolded the past year, I would think that the most transparent way to do that for us, for them, and for each other would be to have a full board committee instead of private committees. And just a side note, I really loved how Mr. DiCilio last week talked about the Hoagie Sale. It's one of my most favorite events this town does. It is fantastic. I know you guys all have your own opinion on Ron. However, I do think that every time there are thank yous that go out about Hoagie Sale, it has to go back to the Cal project, and whether you like it or not, that was the root of it. It's like telling Pete Rose he can't be in the Hall of Fame. He deserves a thank you, and the Cal project deserves a thank you every single time.
Nicole.
Julie. I'm going to explain, I need to explain committees to her first because she didn't, the entire, all of your remarks were based on the premise that these are like private meetings and they're not. So, let me just explain for the public the way committees worked for time in memoriam. You have these three standing committees. It's an opportunity, when we get together, nine of us, we have to publicize that. It has to be an open meeting. We have to take public comment. So, by having a meeting of just four board members and administrators, you're able to talk about ideas and then at the work session have that public conversation. Nothing has ever died in committee. I guess things could, but that never happens because the administrators can just continue to bring it through. But for example, let's, so one committee is Student Activities and Communication and the type of stuff we would talk about in there where like, you know, like the equivalent, like Mike DiCilio, it used to be Katherine Carey, was the administrator. The superintendent is in every single meeting. The business administrator's in the business meeting. HR is in the Student Activities meeting. I mean, there's more than one administrator in each of these meetings, and it's a way to get information earlier, discuss it, vet it out with the group, and then have a work session where you talk about it because there are a lot of, I think, from my experience living, working that way, and now working at, looking at the way things work now, items are put on the agenda and like, people are like, can I talk about that? Can I talk about this? Because if it affects personnel or legal, we can't talk about it. So, for instance, if you're, if somebody were to bring the sub idea, you know, cutting down the subs as a cost-saving measure to this body, you know, some of us might want to say, well, look at the P, we have so much PD. That's why the teachers need to be out of the classroom. Or, you know, is this a legal issue? That conversation is completely shut down in public by him, Ari, because it's legal and it's HR. Whereas if you're in a small group with administrators, you can ask those questions. It's a first pass. So, it was, they were implemented again as a way to get us more information earlier so that we can be educated, so that when we talk in public, we can have educated discussions. And there's nothing to stop, everybody gets the agenda for the committee meetings. So, like if I can't go to a meeting, I can say, hey, you guys are talking about this in IA, here are my comments and suggestions on that issue. And that person brings it to the committee. And that's always how it worked, and that's why we went back to that.
Elaine.
Yeah, I was just going to reiterate what you just said, that there's always an administrator there and that it's a chance to talk about it and then bring it forth at the work session. And also, if somebody can't make it, somebody else can volunteer from another committee to sit in. So, it's not always the same people locked into a committee. So, you get more, more done rather than arguing, I guess you want to say. It's just a chance to talk, maybe work better together, learn to work better together, which is something that we need to do.
That right there, I think, Elaine, is like the soft, like one of the soft skills that we have when we had committees. I mean, people that typically didn't like each other in the past, had to sit across from each other in a small room and talk about important issues. They were forced to talk about the issues. And you put these things aside, and you also create relationships with these people because, let's face it, when we're in public like this, one person can derail a conversation. One person can set things off. And when you're in public, I mean, when you're in a committee like that and you're working with other people, you think a little bit more about, do I really want to eviscerate this person in a public meeting when I just sat and talked to them about my dog and my kids and all these things in committee? So, it's just a better way, I think, to have more collegial conversations, as Elaine stated.
So, I'm just going to quote something that we used to always tell the kids in the classroom. You don't have to be best friends, but you do have to learn to work together.
Thank you. Raymond Wass. That's the last card I have, by the way.
So, some of my questions are related to this. So, I know you said we make budget cuts to certain things. I'm just curious if we did budget cuts for like central administration at all because it seems like we do a lot of cutting at the roots where it exists within the school district and our teachers, our facilities, and many other people that deserve a lot more praise than just saying, yes, central administration administrators do that, but the work gets done by teachers and make them get educated and help them. So, this is a comment to you guys. So, for those teachers who had me and everything else and so forth and everything else, thank you, and you deserve that praise because you got me somewhere that I wanted to be at, to be a educator, a future educator in this district, wanting to do things and make things better. So, thank you for that. However, my other question is, is that we have on the agenda that there are requests within, in finance and facilities, and it is from '21, '22, '23. So, what metrics are used for that to be rewarded? Because that was never explained, and honestly, is it himself evaluating himself, or is it you guys evaluating it to make sure of it? Because if he doesn't meet that, why does he deserve it? So, that's a lot of things to be concerned with, and I think that's why it should be addressed and figure out that. So, yeah.
To address the miracles, the three items under N, I think they were '21, '22, '23, those were polled, you might have missed it earlier in the meeting, the president polled those there from board members to actually vote on it, so it can't be dealt with tonight. That's going to be polled, that will be put on the agenda at a future meeting. As far as the specific metrics, we can't have that discussion in public. They relate to personnel items. As Scott mentioned earlier, you know, there are, the superintendent has a contract, there are goals that were approved by the board, that were approved by the Executive County Superintendent. The board has the ability to review the evidence or data provided and have those discussions and make their decisions. We can't have that discussion publicly, unfortunately, though.
And I'll just tack in. When you look at central admin, too, we eliminated two positions up here this year so far, I think two, and definitely one in the year prior. Three is what it's ringing my bell right now, but we definitely have.
Can I have a motion to close to public? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay. Moving on to voting, can I have a motion to approve items one through three under the report of the superintendent?
Motion.
Second. Who's second, Ralph? Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please. Mrs. Hartong? Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross? Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla? Absent. Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Nothing under instruction, three items under policy for second reading, district seeking approval of three policies, eligibility of residents and non-residents, students, food services, and school security program. Can I get a motion to approve items one through three?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Scott?
So, thanks for making the updates on number three. I think that that puts us in a better spot, that we're pointing to an authoritative standard rather than specifying that ourselves. On number one, the policy 5111, I had a comment about the way that it read regarding students that are transferring or moving out of the district mid-year. It, to me, reads as saying that we will definitively charge tuition for that. I don't know if that's how everybody else reads it as well, but, and if that's our intent, that we're going to charge every time. Does he read it as that, or is the "may" upfront? Does that mean that it's?
Which page are you on for that?
Page five.
Five?
I think it's page five.
It was supposed to be changed.
Yeah. It changed to "may," but I think the way that the "may" is in there, I don't know that it, it says the board may approve it, but then we're going to charge. Like the "may" is, to me, referring to what the board approval may or may not approve.
So, you're talking about a student who is in grade 12 and in their graduation year of the school and whose parent has moved away from the school district during that paragraph?
Correct.
During the course of the school year, may, with board approval, be permitted to finish the school year in school district with the payment of a uniform tuition amount as approved by the Executive County Superintendent. Wait, I'm confused. That's just senior privilege. They've always paid for senior privilege? So, this is making them pay for senior privilege? That's what it sounds like.
Do you think that that "may," I guess, Ari, from your legal opinion, does that "may" mean that it has flexibility, or is it?
We don't want it to be that we're charging. Scott, without? I responded to one of the emails that you and Sean sent me. Sean, was this that email? Yes, so the word "may" is directly from? So, Sean, just so people could hear, I responded to the email that you guys wrote about this, and the word "may" is used directly from the statute, which is why ultimately I recommended that it remain in there.
Yeah, so.
18A 38-3, that you specifically use the word "may."
Yeah. But the, do you feel that the "may," I see the "may" as having two connotations, right? The board may or may not approve the student to stay in the district for the remainder of the year, right? That's the first part. The second part is whether or not they're going to be charged. I don't necessarily read that that "may" applies to that, but you're a lawyer.
I don't read that it applies to that either. I read that they will be charged.
They will be charged.
As I'm reading it right now.
Yeah, that's how I read it, too.
So, what if we, Scott, what if it said, be permitted to finish the school year in the school district with the option of a payment? Or can we just take that out? It's in the statute, though. So, we have to leave it in?
You're going to want, you want to leave it in the policy, right? This could be, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, my question is.
No, it's a good pickup. You want to put it in committee?
Yeah, 100%.
I think so.
Yeah, thank you.
If everybody agrees. I think we should decide as a board what we want to do with that and then make sure it reflects.
Senior privilege is not something we want to go away.
Well.
Right? I don't think.
No, I think we want to, I think the question just is.
Pull it and we'll get it, get to a better spot.
You give them that option to stay, but are they going to be charged or are they not going to be charged? That's the question.
Well, and it's something to talk about, whether or not we want to charge them. Like, it's.
That's a report, but we do not charge now.
Based on the way it's written, it will be charged, so.
Yeah, pull it in and talk about it if you want to.
Did you got that, Lori?
So, we pulling it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so revise, whoops.
Revising the motion, it's motion to approve items two and three, tabling number one for second reading. Any other discussion?
On the other two?
Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Serrano?
Do I have to make a motion to, she made a different motion. Do I have to motion that new motion?
We're just roll calling it. I just revive, I just.
All right, yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chilla? Absent. Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve items one and two under Student Activities and Communications. Motion to approve items one and two under Student Activities and Communications, district seeking approval of homeless charter and foster student placements, and the spring athletic schedules.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Under Human Resources, can I have a motion to approve items one through 24?
Make a motion.
Thank you, Pat. The second? Ralph? Ralph, any discussion?
I have discussion, I have discussion under A5. The last, the last one, two things. This is asking for money for a person to go as a, I guess, advocate. Two questions is this. It says the start date is 6/22/25, and the end date is 6/6/25.
So is it tied?
Definitely, yeah, definitely not right. We missed the two in front of the six, Sean?
So it's 6/22 to 6/26. The second question on that, it talks about the fact that we hosted the New Jersey State Desbian Festival, and several students qualified to go to Bloomington, Indiana. I'd like to know how many students.
They were the ones that presented last week. He said it last, last week.
They were, they presented it last week. But I, I don't recall, I don't recall how many people.
They're qualified? Dr. Sweeney? Can certainly get that to you, or we could table that piece of it until you have it.
Then the other question I have, and the solicitor will have to guide me on this. With a situation like that, where teachers being pulled from a class, would an administrator be able to go in that, in that, in that place? How, how is it?
The answer to that question is based entirely on the administrator's contract. So that's something I'd have to look at, and then we can talk about.
It's during-
It's a pretty pricey amount of money.
It's after summer break starts. So there won't be kids in the school. June 22nd, the kids are already out of school.
Yes. And I, and I also believe, too, that without going into personnel, sometimes we want the person who leads that initiative to go, as opposed to just an administrator who doesn't directly lead that initiative.
So, right now, I can't get an answer on how many students we're talking about.
I mean, I could message John if you want me to, and get an answer.
Are we referring to how many students qualified for it, or are pending?
We're sending, we're sending someone to chaperone to Bloomington, Indiana, and it talks about, there were several students, but it doesn't say how many subs, was it three? Was it 20?
Yeah, it was less than 11, because only 11 students participated. So it's less than 11. He said that last, the last meeting.
If you want us to pull that piece and get that information for you, it's a good time, it's not for- Yeah, if you want us to pull that, pull that piece, and we can get that information for you, that's an easy question.
I mean, it's not till, not till when, June? Yeah, that would, I'd find that appropriate.
Which item is that? What number was it?
Well, it's not a number, it's just, for some reason, there's no numbers, it's just, and you can't go by initials, because the one right above it is JS2.
Well, you're in the A5, though, right? A5?
Yeah, the last one.
A5, the last one.
Oh, okay, so, but the question about the students isn't anything on here. This is just administrators. This is just professional-
It's in the body of the description, the purpose.
That's what I'm trying to find, oh, okay. So you're just, it's not like we're voting on the kids to, paying on the-
I just want to, I just want to know-
Oh, okay, all right.
How, how many students are involved in this?
I'm just trying to see if we're pulling something from the agenda, but we're not really. It's just an inquiry.
Now, also, are the, are the students paying for this themselves, Bloomington, Indiana?
Ray, is that 11 qualified? 11 qualified?
11, okay.
11 pieces qualified, I think, as well as the other kids.
Okay, 11, okay. 11 people qualified, less than 11 kids going. We can find out the rest of the information.
Yeah, I just want to further clarify. We do have a, we do have an academy.
I think we should pull this piece, pull this one, and then let us get the information, and we'll bring it back through the committee.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so-
Also, that's, that's fine, thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead.
That, no, that's it, that's the only one.
So, on A5, the last item is coming off, on the professional development. So you can vote yes or no. You don't have to give initials or anything.
Right?
It's coming off.
So we're pulling JS, right?
Yeah.
So say that with the student, is that a student, or is that-
No, that's the teacher.
Do you have to say the name, because there's no number?
She's going to use the initials, FJ. It's the last one on the agenda, it would be-
But there is another person right above with the same initials.
That's fine, but she's referencing the last person on the list.
Okay.
Well, I already read it out, so. So what, the motion is to approve items one through 24 under, excuse me, yeah, one through 24, under HR. But on the, in the A5, the last item, initials JS, is coming off.
Yes, correct.
What, Ralph? Yeah, that, yeah, it'll be back, it'll be back. Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Baker?
Abstained to number four, eight, and 10. Yes to the rest.
You're abstaining, Connie, from-
Abstained to number, abstained to number four, eight, and 10. Yes to the rest.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries, thank you. Under Finance and Facilities, motion to approve items one through 20 and number 24.
So moved. Second? Any, who's second? Pat seconded it. Any discussion?
You said one through 20 and 24.
Right, 21, 22, and 23 were removed.
Understood.
To be revisited at a later date. Any discussion? Uh-uh. Seeing none, roll call. Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries. Motion to approve items one and two under Special Ed.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call. Ms. Clancy?
Yes.
Mrs. Hartong?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Kuzempel?
Yes, motion carries.
Negotiation?
Yes, so that, that concludes the voting. Do we have any items of new business from anyone on the board?
I'm going to ask again.
Yes.
I know that we were saying we were going to wait until May for goals. I just don't think we should be waiting until May, even if we have a special meeting. Goals are supposed to be part of what we're doing up here. Goals are supposed to be part of when we're saying yes to things as far as the district goals, and we've been without goals for much too long.
Yeah. So I did speak to our field service rep from New Jersey School Boards, and I expressed some of those concerns, because she is not available until May. And she sent me, and we were supposed to have a conference call, but I got stuck in a meeting at work. We're going to reschedule that, it was supposed to be Monday. But she sent me like a board action goal plan that we can, we can work through. Everyone did send ideas for goals, so I have all of that in that document that we've been updating, and I can put that in the board packet this week, so that you can all look at it. I cleaned it up. And so we could, I mean, I think this is a good plan. She felt in lieu of her coming, that using this document, which I'll also send you, was a good way to get going with that.
Okay, and I also think that we shouldn't necessarily not have her in May, but I'm sure there are a lot of other topics that the board could use about.
Mm-hmm. I'm trying to get her sooner than May, but it doesn't look good.
We've always done goals, when I've seen them before, there hasn't been a rep here.
Yeah, and also, we have to keep in mind, too, that the board goals and the district goals are different, and then the superintendent has his goals and his district goals. So, what? And so, some of what she was going to go into was that. You know, what is an appropriate board goal? What is an appropriate district goal? Like, some of the things that people submitted are great ideas, but they're not appropriate board goals. So that's what she's going to, you know, help us work through.
Okay, thank you.
Any other items of new business? Okay, can I have a motion open to the public?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April Renzetti?
Okay, first and foremost, Lori, are you still here? I am so proud of you. You're going to be amazing. I'm very proud of you. Ray, very proud. Students well represented. Very proud. I own that. Getting back to where I left off, in the past, Dr. Hibbs, it has been said sometimes that the financial hole that we are in is on the past administration, and how they cut and saved, and try to cut and save, and so on and so forth. But since you have been here, every person that you have hired, you have hired at the very unnecessary, very aggressively high end of a salary guide. How do you answer to that? That claim we are in such financial turmoil, how does this board approve that? Scott, you just said that you vote appropriately, you're a numbers guy, we all have come to learn that. However, how are you okay with the salaries coming in on the high end of the spectrum being in such dire financial need? There is nothing conservative, cost-saving, or budgetarily responsible about the money that is being spent on the administrative salaries coming out of this administrative building. Nothing. Non-unit employees were given an absorbent amount of raises. Meanwhile, supervisors and principals have unsettled contracts. Support staff, you're not settled yet, correct? Right? The teachers are getting ready to go into bargaining, and I'm very nervous about that, as well as being a member of the WTEA negotiations team, that we will be, too, for a long time, unsettled and without contract. I'm sure morale is going to even get better with that. However, thanks to our friends at NJEA, your numbers are wrong. And I'll just leave it at that. We get the cuts are a part of the workforce, and we are expected that to happen. However, you are spending unnecessary and cutting what hurts the educational process. You don't have a budget problem, you have a priority problem. And the priority clearly appears to not be the educational success of our students or their safety. Sadly, what is being done and shared is not always accurate. Interpretation is very finicky. It's a funny thing. I have lived here my entire life. I grew up in a house with eight kids, proudly one hell of a blended family. All different ages, several different friend groups, numerous, numerous different teachers, and all graduates of Washington Township High School. The reason I share this is because I know an incredible amount of people in this town, most refer me as the mayor. Needless to say, because of this, I hear more about things that I would like to know. Numerous people from this community reach out to me all the time with questions and concerns about this district. The decisions that are made, the rumors, what teachers are in support of, what we're not in support of, what we think is absolutely crazy. And yes, I give my opinion, and I give my truth. The fact that there is little to no transparency from this administration, from this central building, from this curriculum department, is unprofessional, to say the least. What is presented to this community and these parents compared to the directives that we are often given, not only don't align, they're not even in the same ballpark. Two questions. E-Hol Pass, what does it cost the district? Why are we still using it? And isn't a feature in Genesis able to do the same lav part that E-Hol Pass can do? Because I know that wasn't a cheap buy. The website, Dr. Hibbs, why are we hiring, why are we advertising that we're hiring? Why is it on the flash page? Confused. An issue that came to me a few hours ago before I got here this evening, and I was asked to speak about. Annette, I do apologize, because I have not had a time to call you so that we can talk about this privately, but I was asked to bring it up publicly, I have to do my job. So, in dealing with a resignation at one of the elementary school nurses, fellow nurses are being told that they're going to need to cover that school on a rotation basis. How is this working? How is the rotation happening? Are all the nurses going to cover and not just a select few? Are they being paid for mileage? Are they going to be paid for after-contracted hours? For example, if a high school nurse is pulled to an elementary level, our contract is 235, the elementaries go to 330, 340. How is that being billed? Who is that bill, who does that bill need to go to? Are we looking to hire anyone? Have we looked for a replacement? Are parents going to be notified that there is times, possibly, that their child's school will be without a nurse? Has a nursing facility like Bayata been notified? And we've talked about this in the past, I know that at some point there was, but I don't know where we stand now.[1552.12] I know that at some point there was, but I don't know where we stand now. I believe that is it finally for me this evening. However, I do look forward and appreciate a response to all my questions and my concerns. Thank you.
Well, we'll be happy... April, would you mind? That was a whole lot of questions. Could you email them to Annette, and we'll be happy to get some responses to you?
Yeah, I'll go social base with Annette tomorrow anyway.
Perfect. Awesome, thank you. So just a couple of quick things. I really don't think it's accurate that I have hired on the aggressively high end for every person that I've hired. That's absolutely not true. I have hired people at the low end. There are people that were given credit for steps. So it all depends on a case-by-case basis, but I definitely don't hire all the way to the other end. That's just not accurate. Non-unit, I want to make sure I'm speaking accurately because I think Scott was right. I think non-unit, their percentage, and there was a range in there, all receive less than every other unit. Janine, am I right on that?
Yes.
All receive less than every other unit. Just for clarity's sake, principals and supervisors are out of... You know, expired on June 30, and the board is negotiating with them now. You know, WSSPA and WTEA will be this June, so they are not out of contract yet, just for clarity for everybody. The fact that we don't prioritize the educational success or safety, totally untrue. You don't have to like the RBPAC poll. Totally respect your opinion. We don't agree. And I also... There's a ton of things we could talk about, not here right now at 10 o'clock, but we've done a ton over the last few years to really focus on educational success and safety. E-Hall Pass, I think we are... And it's Genesis Turnstile, I think, that we're talking about. We are exploring. Website, why are we advertising? Because we are hiring. There's definitely people that we're hiring. And I think the last one was... Annette will be happy to get back to you on your nurse questions.
I actually would like to get back right now.
Go ahead.
I just want to... I have to be... I just don't want to alarm people. That's why I'm going to respond. We actually do have quite a few sub-nurses who are hired by the district. We also use agencies. I have an amazing secretary who works tirelessly, way beyond her contractual day, to make sure we have sub-coverage. We have one building where we had a vacancy, and a candidate, a great principal who did hire, that didn't work out, so we have subs who have been filling in. The only time our nurses who are in buildings cover for each other is when we have exhausted every other option because our first priority is the safety of the kids. So I just wanted to clarify. Absolutely. I just don't want to alarm families to think that they don't have a nurse.
Thank you, Annette. Mrs. Watson?
I think they were already before me. But yes, my name is Mrs. Watson, and I've been coming here for over 25 years, maybe? Maybe longer.
Can you speak a little to each other?
Yes, my name is Mrs. Watson, and I've been coming here for maybe 25 years, and it's always been about entitlement. And that is one of the issues because entitlement is what they really are being trained, to think that they are entitled. Like, right now, you're having a raffle. There's only one of me. If you did a raffle right now, how many chances would I have to be in that raffle? That's unfair for the so many children that's not going to get that preschool who really need it. That's really unfair. And didn't the governor allocate money so that there would be money for preschool? But you look at that, that's like, all of you will be able to get in, but I won't. And I'm more likely to need it. So when you're talking about entitlement, that's entitlement. Did you notice also, when I came up here, you didn't take my card and you closed me out? Entitlement. I've been talking about trying to end racism because it has to come with the educators. You, all of you. So I'm going to do my Italian joke because this is what I learned from an Italian when I was very young. Never let a vicious man on your lane because if he does, he'll take your lane. Italian joke 300. Always guard your A-dominant man because your A-dominant man keep what you are as you are. So if you're Italian, he's keeping that Italian language, that Italian beautiful look. You know that Maserati? Italian six-foot-two man, he's keeping that. Then the next attack is 500 women because if you attack the women, then you attack the next generation of children. Right? Of course, we all know that. Change starts with someone speaking out whether you like it or not. And these are from Italian men, purebreds. Right? Okay. Right now, you have a war in Ukraine, he's standing because he understands that joke. If you attack the men, then you put the women in a position of lowering the level. So when I told it, I told it because I'm an African versus Italian, but really, this is a joke where they call it the Mussolini joke, where it's Germans versus Italians. If they let those Germans, then all of a sudden you have a German Italian woman trying to look and walk and talk like she's German over being a beautiful Italian. Bella, she's going to change who she is. That's entitlement. Now, they're going to say blight lies matter, maybe 17 generations. For that perfect German, you change to talk like a German, walk like a German, act like a German instead of being the Italian that you truly are. When I told that joke, which most Italians know, that's how they say who they are. That's what Ukraine really is fighting. They don't want to be that Russian. They want to be Ukrainian. They want to look Ukrainian, talk Ukrainian. For you, you might think it's funny because you want to play entitlement, but there is no such thing as entitlement. All of you are the children of God. When you try to do that entitlement and separation, that proves what God you truly love. Child.
Thank you. Nicole Lanuti?
I just wanted to... Two notes real quick. After Julian explained everything about working together and the committees, none of you work together, and that's the alarming part. You need to work together because everything, again, that was talked about tonight needs a fix. There was a discussion about committees with other board members, and not everybody felt comfortable changing back to committees. That had to come from somewhere, and even though it wasn't a majority, it really should hold some weight. And the reason that they didn't feel comfortable should be addressed before proceeding with, I guess, going back to committees. It seems that a lot of you try to spite other ones, or maybe that doesn't always end up offering the best solution. So even though something might not die in a committee, it may be construed in a certain way when other people aren't present or have an immediate opinion or feedback. Also, it was addressed last week that Julie, you held a committee meeting with no admin, so not everything you said was accurate, which proves my point. So how are we supposed to know going forward that it is guaranteed that that won't happen? We just heard from somebody about students being held accountable for not coming to class or leaving early. Are board members going to be held accountable moving forward to make sure that these committees actually function in the way that they are supposed to? Because at this time, it doesn't... There's no confidence that that could happen or that it could be trusted to work productively. Every person sitting here and every person that spoke and every teacher and student at home really depends on you. So I'm hoping that moving forward, there is no more committees without admins or keeping things from other board members that we have heard repeatedly over and over and over.
Thanks. Randy Ford?
So I just... Before I ask my questions, I just wanted to call out policy 0167, which in part says, "Responses to questions posed by a participant during each public participation session of the meeting shall be provided during the course of the particular public participation session at the direction of the presiding officer." And I just say that because, Ms. Kuzempel, this was actually an email you wrote to the board as a member of the public on March 21, 2024. And in that, I think Mr. Ross or somebody didn't answer your questions, and in there you said, "How is not acknowledging questions at a public meeting transparent? If I allowed that to happen at a meeting, half of you would have crucified me. Do better." So I just give that as sort of the preface. My questions are, we have the three committees that are, I guess, back. So who is on those committees or who are the members of the board that are on those committees? And were anyone's preferences that were, you know, at the last meeting told, those will attempt to be honored or all honored as many as I can? Who makes up those three committees? Were any preferences not given? And then also, if that's not available, when will it be available, and will it be posted to the district website? My second question is, someone mentioned, I think it was Ari, about the merit goals tonight and their not being a quorum for this particular piece of action because of the conflicts involving, I guess, the merit goals themselves or Dr. Hibbs' contract. So who are the board members who are conflicted? And then at the last meeting, I think Ms. Baker gave an update on negotiations committee. There's no update tonight. I remember from her last update, there were going to be some meetings. There were, I think, two scheduled, two coming up in March. Any meetings that did occur, is it possible to just give an update on which unit met? Who from the board and administration were there? And just how long the meeting lasted? Not interested in back and forth and all that, but just sort of how long did each last? So those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take the first one, which is committees. I mentioned the committees earlier. So it's Student Activities and Communication, which we call SAC. It's Business and Finance and Facilities, that's all in one. And then there's Instructional Affairs. And I didn't... I don't know that I heard back from every single person, but everyone's getting whatever they ask for, and that should be up within the next couple of days on the website, who's on which committee. And then I'm going to have Ari answer the conflict stuff.
Randy, there's four board members with legal conflicts. Pat, Linda, Julie, and Elaine. Being that we only have eight board members here tonight, obviously that leaves us with four that can vote. That's the issue.
And then the last item was negotiations. Connie, did you want to update on negotiation?
I gave the dates last board meeting. Nothing's changed.
Same. He asked who met. Who met? Which groups did you meet with? Was it just support staff, right?
We haven't had any meeting. Since last week, we have not met.
Okay.
I think that I'll make sure that Connie has these. Which unit met? Who was there from admin? And how long did it last? Those are three questions, which I think you will just incorporate in the year.
I don't have my notebook here tonight. Thank you.
Patty Sukalas?
Hello, my name is Patty Sukalas. I am a WTEA executive for the high school. First, this wasn't part of my original plan to speak about, but I just wanted to comment because I am the numbers girl for the union. When you talk about that the non-unit raises were lower than all of the unit contracts, I just want to clarify that you may not be aware, and this may be the public as well, that in the public sector, we are the only public sector for the teachers and administrators that have to pay what's called an increment load. So when someone moves up a step on a salary guide, that comes out of the settlement first before any money is applied. Now, someone that's a non-unit contracted person does not have a salary guide, so they just get their raise. So when the... Because I did look at the non-unit raises that were approved. They were all between the 2 to 3, 3.15, somewhere up to 3.5 percent raises. Just to give you a point of reference, the teacher's guide from the first year to the second year of our contract, the top of the guide saw a 1.49 percent increase. And from last year to this year, the top of the teacher's scale guide saw a 1.54 percent increase. So all of the non-unit raises were higher than that amount because they don't actually pay for those increment loads. So just keep that in mind as those things get approved, that those are accurate numbers. All right, so back to my point. So I'm here tonight to follow up last night's Board of Education meeting regarding the elimination of the Green Club and Newspaper Club. I just wanted to check to see if there are any updates regarding this matter. We continue to be told that there's no funding for these clubs, yet we've seen approved raises within the district. The total cost to support both clubs across six elementary schools would be approximately $17,000. Were you able to determine where the budgeted funds for these programs were allocated to instead? These clubs have been valuable to students by fostering environmental awareness and providing opportunities for journalism and student expression. You heard firsthand the impact that our clubs have on our students tonight. Many of our students and parents remain concerned about their discontinuation and would appreciate any information regarding the decision-making process and any potential alternatives to keep these activities available. Any transparency or clarification on this matter would be greatly appreciated. I look forward to your response and any updates that you can provide, and I just wanted to thank you for your time and your dedication to all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty, I'll be happy to email you a response.
Hello, I am asking if there's an update on the creation of a community outreach group with the board. I know that there was several board members who were disappointed that we're not in the elementary school tonight rather than being at this building.
It's ring through, and that was my daughter. She doesn't know I'm here. Can you repeat what you said at the top?
Sure, sure. So I'm here to find out an update on the community outreach group. I have had communication and support from other board members. I know that there was some disappointment from several board members about not having these meetings in the elementary school to encourage public engagement. From my perspective, the problem with engaging the public is not the location of these meetings. It's, to be... Like, your comments, like, I have no idea what any of that meant. So as people are watching YouTube meetings and trying to engage, support where they can, there's just not a lot of opportunity for us to, as parents and community members, to understand the facts. So I think there... I'm happy to participate and volunteer, but I think that we need to do a better job of consolidating and informing parents, and I think that there's opportunities for the board to create a committee that involves the community to do so. And I think that would make a much stronger impact on engagement than the location of the meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Motion to close? All in favor? And I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor? Thank you for coming out.